Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, August first, 2022. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation be filed by the pledge allegiance. Tonight, as we meet, we are ever mindful of all the challenges and situations that befront us, both in the world around us and the greater world, but also within our own community. As we look upon our town and see the commitment of so many kind-hearted people and so many acts of kindness and great nice deeds that are being done by Batavia in support of their fellow man or people in support of needy families or whatever, and certainly with institutions within our community like Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry, we are ever mindful about what a blessed community we do live in and we're ever thankful for all those who step forward and go many extra miles in their lives to make this town a very special place for people to raise families. So with that sentiment, I expressed a great appreciation from the city council and myself, and I also want to, as always, express that we show a special blessing tonight for all those from our community and from throughout our country who are serving on foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be shown on all those men and women from the United States of America as they go about their vital missions. As always, tonight, we ask for wisdom and courage and understanding and vision as we act on the items before us. As I said many times before, knowing in the hearts and minds of each member of the city council, we are here to do what is in the very best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Let's see. Alderman Wolf, you want to lead the pledge allegiance?
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
As the city clerk, please call the roll.
Miller. Risotto.
Here.
Beck. Tommy. Janzett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Aaron. Aaron.
Jeff, yeah. Just trying.
Here. Thank you. Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay. Ewer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
We have what? Twelve or thirteen?
You ten.
We have ten?
We have ten.
Okay, we have ten Aldermen present for the meetings. We have the necessary requirement to conduct business. Item four is a reminder to everybody who's going to speak to us tonight to please use the microphone because this is all being recorded and filmed for replay on Batavia Access TV. So just keep that in mind. So we don't, it's, if people don't get near the mic, it's hard for sometimes folks on TV to hear what's being said. All right, moving to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? You don't hear, don't know of anything. So, okay. Moving then, we'll move to tonight, the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Janzett is chairman of governmental services. Would you present this?
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place unfiled the June 2022 City Council financial reports approvals, the July 2022 payroll in the amount of $1,042,163.79. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,484,460.83. City Council minutes for July 18th, 2022. Revised Resolution 22-48-R authorizing an IGA between the City of Batavia and Kane County for household hazardous waste collection services. Resolution 22-78-R authorizing agreement with VAV the medium to upgrade the city council AV equipment. Resolution 22-79-R approving a contract with QP testing to perform Cherry Park substation testing for an amount not to exceed $30,030, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Resolution 22-80-R approving a contract with OSI to provide a hardware and software upgrade for the city's electric skater system for an amount not to exceed $277,347, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Resolution 22-81-R authorizing a contract with electric conduit construction to install underground conduit alongside 680 Kingston Avenue for an amount not to exceed $37,573, which includes a 10% contingency. And Resolution J, authorizing a contract with electric conduit construction to install underground conduit along 470 North Randall Avenue for an amount not to exceed $28,070, which includes a 10% contingency. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Janzett, second, Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? For call the roll.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Aye.
That's it. Ten yes, no, no, four absent.
Motion's approved by vote of ten yes, no, no's two absents. Okay, moving then to item number seven, matters from the public for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody? Guess not. Anything, anybody online? Okay, let the record reflect that Alderman Miller and Alderman Beck have just entered the meeting. So we're now up to twelve. All right, moving to item number eight, which is the Chamber of Commerce report. We're very happy, honored to have the president and CEO, Margaret Perroll, here to tell us a few things about what's going on in the chamber.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, I'm happy to do that. Thank you for having me this evening. Good evening, everyone. I do want to give you an update each month, last couple of months. I've been mentioning our wonderful Batavia Chamber Business Scholarship. It is called your, our Grow Your Business Scholarship, and we're partnering with the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center. They have received many, many applications. We are donating $10,000 out of our budget from the Chamber and getting matching funds from the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center to help businesses develop their skills so that they can survive in any economic environment. So like I said, many applicants, they've narrowed it down to six finalists, and those six Batavia businesses will be presenting to the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center later this month. So we're really thrilled to see that program moving along. I also want to remind everybody that Chamber bucks are still available at the Chamber. They come in $10 increments. Now that we've offered them for the last three years, we definitely see trends in sales. We're thrilled to say that over 90 businesses accept Batavia Chamber bucks. We definitely see a surge in sales from November through Christmas, and then at the end of the school year is teacher gifts, and then in the summer when parents are looking for coaches' gifts. So it's great to see that money is being spent and kept in our, in our town. So come by anytime at 106 West Wilson to pick up Chamber bucks. Well, between nine and five, please. We are currently accepting nominations for our 2022 Donna De La Sase Award winner. This is a highly regarded award that is named for Donna De La Sase, the first full-time executive director from the Batavia Chamber. She served for 16 years and made the local economy and our business community even better. So we, we've named our award after Donna De La Sase, and we are accepting nominations for anybody who has done great things for the community as a Chamber member. So those nomination letters can be emailed to me or dropped off at the Chamber office. The award winner will be given the award at our 2022 Harvest Celebration Event. That will be our big milestone Chamber celebration on September 21st from 6:00 to 8:30. So mark your calendar and come join us. It's a wonderful evening. I want to welcome businesses that have joined the Chamber this month. Louis Angelo's Pizza, Urban Artisan, Black Angel Designs, Techmer PM, who will be my guest in a couple of minutes, Be Local Tri-Cities, My Advisor and Planner, MG Photo Solutions, Interact Advertising, Ink File, and Vanco International. Why do members join the Batavia Chamber? To build relationships and business contacts, have a local advocate for them, networking, education, marketing, visibility, economic development, awareness of funding opportunities, credibility, job board postings, and so much more. The Batavia Chamber loves supporting our local businesses. The Chamber always has a full calendar of educational and networking opportunities. We have a variety of upcoming in-person and virtual events. Our Not-for-Profit Forum will be on Zoom this month, Wednesday, August 3rd at 8:00 AM. Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, we have a few of these coming up. We're keeping the mayor quite busy. Wolf Beach and Day Watch is celebrating their 10-year anniversary and their expansion. The ribbon cutting is Friday, August 5th at 1:00 PM. Our Batavia Women in Business Council that is of women but for all people, men and women are invited to join. We're having a progressive networking luncheon on Tuesday, August 9th at 11:30 at Prairie Landings. We are putting together a webinar for Illinois Secure Choice Information Webinar since rules have changed in Illinois and retirement planning is required from all employers with five employees or more. So we're putting that webinar on at 11:00 AM Thursday, August 11th. We have an Active Threat Situational Awareness and Reaction Strategies in-person event at Bethany Lutheran Church at 1:00 PM on Monday, August 15th. We have another ribbon cutting for Shumway Studios, their five-year anniversary. That will be on Friday, August 19th at 4:00 PM. We have another ribbon cutting for Farm Dog Flowers on Wednesday, August 31st at 4:00 PM. Another ribbon cutting for the expansion of Red Hive Market. That will be at 3:00 PM on Tuesday, September 6th. Another ribbon cutting for Louis Angelo's Pizza at 909 West Wilson. That will be September 13th at 4:30. So come join us at any of those events and say congratulations to the business owners in town. We have a networking at Sidecar Supper Club on Wednesday, August 17th from 4:30 to 6:30. We are, the event will be sponsored by Fox Valley Food for Health, and our spotlight charity will be Moose Charities. Wednesday, August 24th and 25th are the pitch night for our business scholarships that I mentioned at the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center. So I'll have more news about that next month. For any of these events or more information about the ribbon cuttings, please go to our website, bataviachamber.org, or email me, margaret@bataviachamber.org. You could also text the Chamber, 478CHAMBER. That actually has become a great community resource and has been very active when residents in the community have needed information. So we're happy to offer that texting opportunity. Before I introduce my esteemed guest, does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, great. I covered it all. Now I would like to introduce my guest, Rasan Zilbar is the site manager of Techmer PM at 900 Douglas Road. Techmer PM makes polymer modifiers and is a major producer of value-added color and additive master batch for the plastics and fiber industries. So could you please help me? Welcome, Rasan. Find up.
Welcome.
So first of all, I just want to say thank you very much for the time tonight. I do appreciate it. So Techmer PM has been around since actually 1981. We've been in Batavia for a little over 10 years. We've been actually voted six times best places to work in plastics news in the last seven years. As Margaret touched on, Techmer PM is a leading materials design company that works in partnership with plastic processors, OEMs, and designers to solve some of their most difficult business manufacturing and sustainability challenges. Techmer makes products that are in every one of your households and your vehicles to this day. A great example of some of those examples, if you rearview mirror, there's a little product on that little ball on the stem, which is called an acetol. It's a type of polymer that we modify in Batavia at our facility, as long as a lot of your Reynolds or your plastic containers at home. If you use spray paint, those colored caps, we make those as well, even to the point where some of your floor mats, we're a supplier for WeatherTech. So we make things all the way from automotive all the way to medical. We are the first facility in Techmer PM to be an ISO 1345 certified facility, which we just gained last month, which will be the only one domestically to be able to make those products for Techmer PM, which is just a sustainable challenge for us, but it's also an amazing opportunity, to say the least. Techmer is also focused on our ecological presence as well. So here at Techmer, we are focused on reducing our ecological footprint to a fingerprint by creating products that exceed customer goals while using the leanest processes available. At Techmer PM, we're not a plastics company. We're also looking at investing in our, in our employees, which I think it's amazing. You hear a lot about manufacturing, and we're always talking about the products we make. I mean, it's a business just like anything else. However, what I think defines Techmer and sets us apart is that we're a company that invests in our, in our employees. We have five locations domestically and one in Mexico at the moment. I will say that we've partnered this year with Wabasi Community College. We saw that we have a highly Hispanic community into our, in our intermanufacturing, and we actually took the initiative to have onsite English and second language classes twice a week during normal working hours. So we actually shut our facility down four hours twice a week to help our employees grow, and Wabasi came in and partnered and actually had a class for two hours for first and second shifts to help our employees grow, which is something that you don't always see. You know, we're very big in tuition reimbursement, investing in our employees. And, you know, at Techmer, a lot of our values are, you know, team-based safety as in manufacturing, wanting a inclusive culture, you know, honesty and integrity. You know, we're a company that talk about relationships matter, you know, focusing on curiosity and ambition, you know, and it's quality in everything we do, and really focusing on the environmental and industry stewardship. So as you hear about plastics companies and talking about sustainability and post-consumer recyclables, a lot of our message internally and externally is about the fact that we're focused on our employees and those relationships, not just the plastic products that we put out. So I think it's, it's nice to hear a manufacturer locally that talks about those things. And for me, it's, it's really nice to be, you know, back in Batavia. I actually started my first job in Batavia, which was at Funway, which for everyone in Batavia knows, that was Funway. But it's, it's nice to be able to kind of share a little bit about not only who we are and what we do, but who we're trying to become and, and partner with the local community, which we appreciate. So, and that, I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I certainly was pleased to hear about your relationship with Wabasi Community College and the way you're working that out, because I was in the very first class that graduated from Wabasi many years ago, and that was one of their goals, was to get themselves out and be part of the community and do such things as creative teaching in businesses and step right in and be part of it. So you, they've reached a vision they had many years ago, now from what you just told me. So I'm pleased to hear you're utilizing them like that, and I think hopefully others in town may come to do the same thing, because it's, you know, kind of a unique way of doing it, but I think it seems, sounds like it's working for you. So thank you for being one of the trial ones that helped put that over on.
No, I appreciate. They've been a great partner. Even through the pandemic, they helped us, they helped us, you know, put flyers up and recruit for us. And as people were going there for English classes and adult classes, they would advertise and say, you know, you can go here, they'll pay you to take the classes and give back and help the community and what we can do to partner. And they've, they've been a great partner for us.
Good. Great to hear that. Does anybody in the council have any questions you'd like to ask?
I just would say that it's very interesting. I'm looking at your website and looking at some, some of the stuff you guys do. It's really interesting to see some of the things that, you know, you guys are involved with in both the medical industry and automotive, you know, how, how many things that you don't really realize probably started or started being made in your backyard, you know, in town here. We always talk about the history of this town, and we don't realize that the future is also here too, you know, being built all over this, this town.
I appreciate that. You know, I tell you, we're, we're investing a lot of money into the facility, growing. Last year, I would say we, we put almost over a million dollars in the facility, and this year alone, we're probably scheduled to hit another 800,000. So it's, it's constant improvement, looking forward and kind of, you know, turning into a center of excellence. And a great thing to look at is a few years ago, our facility in, in Clinton, when, when Barack Obama was actually president, I guess a little more than a few years ago, him and Joe Biden visited that facility off products that we made in multiple facilities, a tour, and we actually made a, you'll see it, a Shelby made out of plastic, and they were actually able to see it, and you can see it moving. And it was, we partnered with another company, and it was a pretty amazing feat, to say the least.
Again, we're very pleased to have you in Batavia, and I hope you're here for many generations to come.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Margaret, you got anything else? Thank you. All right, moving then to item nine, which is ordinance 2238 authorizing execution of annexation agreement for property at 2 South 303 Hart Road.
I have this one, Your Honor. This is hopefully a soon-to-be-ending quest, trying to get rid of all the islands within the city, annexed into the city. And this is one over on Hart Road that kind of stands alone with some interesting sub circumstances that have around it with some of the use on the property right now. And that's why it's a single property that's being annexed. So does anybody have any questions and comments? Anybody online for it?
Anybody online? Anybody else want to address it?
Okay, if not, I will make the motion that we approve ordinance 2238 authorizing execution of an annexation agreement for property at 2 South 303 Hart Road.
Moved by Alderman. Having a brain block.
Wolf.
Second by Alderman Ostofa for the approval of ordinance 22-38. Any discussion? Kirk Colerole.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved by vote of 12 yes, no, no's two absents. Okay, moving to item 10, which is Resolution 22-074-R authorizing the sale of municipally-owned property at 916 Park Street. Alderman Wolf, you have it?
I have this, Your Honor. We had this property up for sale with a broker, and there's now been interest in it and received an offer, and we've decided to go ahead and accept that and sell the property that we have at 916. The remainder of the property that's there at that address will be sold.
It's not sold yet, but we're authorizing its sale.
Right, correct. Any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2274-R authorizing the sale of municipally-owned real estate at 916 Park Street.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second, Alderman Sulfah for the approval of Resolution 22-074-R authorizing sale municipally-owned property at 916 Park Street. Any further discussion? Kirk Colerole.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Resolution's approved by a vote of 12 yes, no, no's two absents. Okay, moving to item number 11, which is ordinance 22-37 approving a conditional use permit for a cannabis infuser organization and transporting organization at, at the CRM Enterprises 1525 Paramount Parkway. Who's got this one?
Thank you. This is for, as the mayor mentioned, cannabis infuser transporter over in the industrial park. We talked about this at the Cal meeting. No problems with that at this point, unless anybody has any questions. Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2237, approving a conditional use permit for cannabis infuser organization and transporting organization CRM Industries 1525 Paramount Parkway.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second, Alderman Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2237 approving a conditional use permit for cannabis infuser organization and transporting to CRM Enterprises at 1525 Paramount Parkway. Any further discussion? Kirk Colerole.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Ordinance 2237 is approved by a vote of 12 yes, no, no's two absents. Moving to item 12, the administrator's report. Laura.
Good evening. Following your approval of funding, Main Street has sent out an invitation to our downtown small businesses to participate in the program to create videos to be used to advertise those businesses for Shop Small Saturday in November. The contractor is working to complete the annual pavement striping program for arterial roadways and downtown parking spaces, and work continues on the Wilson Street Bridge project. Crews are performing preventative maintenance and repairs to the surface as well as the underside of the bridge. We also addressing, there was some yellow tape that was out in front of limestone and also the Red Hive Market, and that was because the pavement had gone a little bit uneven there. And we did find a method, a poly-level process that was used to correct that problem today. And a few matters, updates from the police department. On Wednesday, July 27th, our department participated in a statewide initiative, Speed Awareness Day, promoted by the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. And during the 24-hour period, Batavia Police Department officers targeted the main thoroughfares and areas experiencing the most significant issues with crashes, speeding, and distracted driving. In total, there were 49 traffic stops, and with 34 of those being for speeding violations. Members of the Batavia Police Department Training Cadre just completed the department-wide training for active shooter, active threat response at one of the local area elementary schools. Key training tasks include individual and team response and movement, room entry clearing, stairwell navigation, rescue team operations, and custody considerations, and link-up and consolidation procedures for mutual aid responder considerations. This is semi-annual training that's done in addition to the annual school safety drills, which members of the police department participate in at all of the schools in our community each year. Members of the Batavia Police Department and I attended an informational meeting with the Kane County State's Attorney's Office about a pre-arrest diversion program that the county has been implementing in a few communities in the area so far, and staff is reviewing the information to determine if the program would be a good fit for City of Batavia. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions on individual projects. Yes?
You mentioned speeding and everything around town. I've actually had two people in the last week come and talk to me about speeding again on Morton and on Town Avenue. I don't know what rotation we have for the speed sign that we put out in different places. Does that, it is on town right now?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And that, it's kind of funny, because that's one of the ones that, you know, was pretty obvious that, you know, it's bad. I've been out just taking different routes for test drives and looking and seeing some of the places. The other one that I know that's really bad on, that I see and I keep talking about is McKee Street between like Western and Van Artwick. And the stop sign, if you were to have somebody sit out there one day a week, they could probably pull two or three people on, blown through the stop sign at Van Artwick, seven, between seven and eight o'clock every morning, just right through it like it's not even there. So something to be aware of if we can, you know, look at those areas a little closer.
Whenever we are provided the information about issues like that, they're passed on to the police department, both whether it is the, the speed panel that can put there to alert drivers of their speed as they go through there, or also have the shifts made aware of the issue so there can be enhanced enforcement.
Thank you.
I want to just add to what Alderman Wolf has just said. I was contacted Saturday morning at McDonald's by one of the residents that lives on Town Avenue, and he produced photographs. And he produced photographs for me of the sign. And his concern was he was very seemingly very pleased with the sign, but it didn't. He he was upset because the sign says, you know, it told you what your speed was going. And he wanted another sign on top of it telling him what the speed on Town Avenue is. Yeah. Well, I know.
He told the residential speed limit in the city of Batavia.
It's thirty, yeah.
Thirty for the statute.
Right.
Want to sign on every block.
He he mentioned to me that he'd already talked to the police department. So I just thought I'd share the discourse that the mayor here is wandering around the town about how we do things and how we don't do things, so. Any other questions for Laura? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other business from the city council? All right, I just want to make a few comments under the mayor's report. Tomorrow morning here, we're going to have another meeting of the Historic Sign Committee. And this is this sign project that we have been recipients of a very generous seventy-five thousand dollar grant from the Dunham Foundation in Aurora. And there's a committee of which our city clerk in her capacity, not as city clerk, but as the curator of the Depot Museum is a very vibrant participant in. And I just want to publicly commend Kate for her efforts here because she really has risen to the occasion and brought a lot of keen observations to what's going on. Right now, we are in the process of, I guess, last meeting, we picked the sign provider who's going to put in the signs. And unfortunately, I I had to give a little eulogy at John Kennedy's memorial service the other day. And I told this story that John had come to my office when this all first came out a few weeks ago. And he was all excited about it because he said the signs are going to be freestanding. You have to put them in the ground and you got to know what's in that ground before you pound them in. So he was going to take personal charge of overseeing all the locations to make sure that there wasn't any wire or pipes or anything. And he had his own ideas of something that should be probably historically remembered, whatever. But anyway, I I just share all that because we really have had risen to the occasion on this thing. A lot of people of interest, George Sheets at the library, has been a very key player in it. And we've had some certainly a good cooperation from the Park District. And, you know, the Batavia Historical Society has been very, very active in in with us, with us in it. So we are, we got all, I think, all the right people at the table. And one of the new ideas that we're going to have is a is a backbone of this whole project is once we get the signs up, we're going to be making a computer film of it in which we will take the picture of the sign at the location, maybe add some historic pictures of what happened here at this whatever site you're talking about. And then there'll be a narration to it about what's going on. And it'll be a, I think, a tremendous education piece, not only for people in town. I've already had a couple of our teachers in the schools say that they want to use it in their classroom because it'll be things that people drive by every day and never realize. One of the ones that I think draws a lot of interest is this room we are in was the room where the fuel lines were made for the rocket that landed on the moon in nineteen sixty-nine. And I've had a couple of other mayors in here recently and I was telling them this and they were just blown away that we had so much history. And then I said, then then you add to it to get down the other end of the block by the sweet water treatment plant. You got the Shumway Foundry Site, which was there from eighteen seventy-two to two thousand and five. And for about thirty years of their run there, they made the molds for the Academy Award. And so you you've got some neat things and then you go out and the, I guess, the second ward there by Alderman Wolf's house. And you go by the old Psychora Greenhouse, which is in, I believe, about the seven, eight hundred block of Walnut Street. It's just a vacant field standing there right now, but there is a sidewalk that Alderman Wolf was very active in getting built, going from Walnut Street down to Augustus and School. And on that sidewalk, a lot of kids now walk very safely to school, but that used to be a railroad track that ran from the northwestern track in Geneva down to the Burlington and Aurora. And the Psychoras who owned the greenhouse at that location were recognized nationally as some of the foremost authorities on the red rose or the rose in general. And they used to grow thousands of roses there at that greenhouse every year. And again, for a very long period of time, nobody seems to know exactly how long. They were one of the principal providers for roses for the Rose Bowl Parade and and on New Year's Day every year, and they would load up railroad car after railroad car on the side tracks, put them on that walkway now where the kids go to Augustus and School, take the cars down to Aurora and put them on the Burlington and then take them out to California. So we've really had some some moments here to be very, very proud of. And so all this is going to be talked about in these signs that we're going to put up. And, you know, we got the Mary Todd Lincoln's thing and we got the Saturday Evening Post cover. And we 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 got, you know, so much of the of the of the stone that was used to rebuild the city of Chicago after the great fire in eighteen seventy-one came out of our quarry. And then the quarries on South River Street, because we had railroad tracks right next to them. We could load the stone up and ship it right to Chicago. So we've just got a wealth of history here and I'm glad we're going to now be able to put put ourselves in the position where we can show it and highlight it. So I just wanted to report that to everybody. And certainly Dan Hofer has been a real key player in this whole thing as president of the Historical Society. So we really have some neat people here and our city clerk is one of them that really is making this thing shine. So I'm very, very excited about it. I just want to add a couple of other reports here that stuff that I think some of you have received comment about. One is, is that I received a couple of emails and I've had a couple of face-to-face conversations with citizens who I guess I would were dismayed, I'll use that word, about our sign that says, slow the fast down. And I don't know, they had different reasons why and that they wanted me to tell them why we put that sign together. So I crafted a, did we send this that to the council so you all know what I said about in the last nine months, we've had five fatal accidents in Batavia? I don't think. Dan, do you ever remember another time we've had this many fatals in Batavia? Yeah, I don't, I, you know, so I said, you know, I think we we needed then to send a message to the community in kind of a unique and hopefully friendly way that, you know, we got, you got to watch your speed here because we're getting, we're killing these people and this is not what we want to be known for. So I I just think that this one was a good idea and I will give our community or communications director a lot of credit for putting this, helping us put this together. So again, we've had some very good people in town come forth and come up with new ideas. And another one I just want to report on because I think there's, and some of you probably have already heard this. Our friends from Pulte Homes are building their new subdivision out on McKee Street, just to the west of what is Trent and Wilkett Lanes and goes down there behind the old Sam's Club. And we have residents that live in very nice housing around it. And I certainly have heard from the folks that are to the east of it because I guess the wind is predominantly from the west to the east. And some of those folks had me out to see how much dust was sitting on their cars after there was that one day when we had a huge wind from the southwest. And that poor subdivision, right, it was right when they were putting all the, just trying to put the streets in. And it was a just a cloud of dust out there all day long. So I took Scott Bunnion and he went out there with me and we looked at it. And then Scott came back and called Pulte and said, we got to stop doing this the way they do it. We're not going to let you be back out there moving any more dirt tomorrow till you get some water trucks out there and start wetting all this this dust down. And I think Alderman Wolf's singer, you must have seen it in your neighborhood where you are.
We, in my neighborhood, we've not had the dust, but some of my son's classmates live just south of where it is and they had an excessive amount of dirt and dust.
Right, so I just wanted to let publicly acknowledge to the community that we are aware of this problem. And twice now, we have asked Pulte to bring, I think, right now, they have at least two water trucks sitting out there all day long.
It's been better.
And they they they, I was on down there by your house the other day, dead end there, looking at what was going on. And there was two water trucks out there. And so I think the message got through to Pulte loud and clear that we really do feel we have a dust problem here of some serious magnitude and we need to pay attention to it. So I think they are, and so I'm pleased by that. But that's just one of the roles that the mayor and the aldermen get dragged into is the dust in the neighborhood. That's kind of a a new one, but I can certainly understand why it has been raised. So I I just am very pleased by some of the things we've had happen in Batavia and that some of it starts out kind of rough or bad. But I like to think that the good staff we have really rises to the occasion very quickly. And certainly Scott Bunnion in the Development Department has been right on top of it. I I need not say much and he's got somebody out there going at it. The day after we called Pulte the first time, I went with Anthony, who's sitting right over there, Mr. Eisen, and our new city building inspector. And we went on, many years ago, I started with Rhonda Oker, our former enforcement officer, a weed removal day. And we go out in the the truck of the building department and where there were some high-profile weeds growing out of front of businesses or in sidewalks and in residential neighborhoods. And we would make a list and then we'd personally go out and just rip those weeds out of the ground. Well, we did it last week. I guess it got out because I'm told there's pictures of us on Facebook tearing out these weeds on the on the on the sidewalks. And we did it on both the east and the west side, so there was nobody that was that was pure on the thing. But Anthony was a good partner to have because he was jumping out of that truck left and right and trying to beat me to the weeds. Another guy, as long as I'm on this speech, I guess I'd like to kind of finish by commending our Batavia businessman Stan Oak. And Stan Oak owns the gas station up here at the top of the hill with his sons at Houston Batavia Avenue. And I think Stan has kind of taken kind of a retirement platform at his business. So he puts his jacket or his gas station coat on when Alan's working for him up there. But he's walking around now and he's joined the weed routine, the weed patrol. And his favorite spot now is, and I'm really pleased that he's doing this. He's attacking the old Avenue Motors Garage across the street at Houston and Batavia Avenue. Because a couple of years ago, it got weeded over and Stan went over there and I I went in and we got the thing. The last week, Stan really rose to the occasion and we did all sides of that building and got them all taken out. We threw it all in bags and so he is a citizen extraordinary when it comes to tearing out weeds. And I'm sure Bob, you guys at station are happy he has something to do.
Picks him out of our hair when he gets
Yeah. But no, he's he's been really great. And I mean, you look at
He spent the better part of the day over there, so.
Yeah, I'm sure he did. If you look at what he did, I mean, it looks a lot better. And he says, you know, everybody comes in and they want to go down Houston Street to Riverwalk and the Depot or the concerts or whatever's going on, park to go across to the flea or farmer's market on Saturday. And he says, I don't want that thing looking like some kind of a dump area. So he's maintaining the weed patrol. So I appreciate this growing number of Batavia citizens who are doing it out just out of the goodness of their heart and their love for their town. And so we have some very nice things to be pleased to. So on that, I'm done. Does somebody want to make a motion for adjournment?
Move for adjournment.
Move by Wolf, second by Sulfur. Take a voice roll.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Sorry, I was late, everyone.